Do you need some chapstick?
No, actually, I've got some.
Make sure you comb your hair.
Yeah, I can appreciate that.
Oh, that was nice, man.
It's the last one I get.
It's the last one.
Are you sure it's the last one?
Let's just roast each other on the way out. That's what I call a party.
Shane needs a comb, brother.
I wish I had one of my first.
And I don't need a comb. I need an Afro pen. I'm so.
Touche.
Toupet?
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 Toucan Sam, brother. Okay, guys, it's go time. Good evening, everybody. This is meeting number forty-eight. This is December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. It is five thirty P M. And we're in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join Annie and myself one last time this year for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Kathleen, roll call, please.
McCambe.
Here.
Recker.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Grant Murray.
Here.
All right. Tonight, we do have two proclamations of retirement. And one of these, the first one, I've known, I've known him and the family for, for all my life, forever. I guess I can't say all my life, but for a very, very long time. I graduated with your little brother, class of eighty-seven. Best class. But.
Close.
A super cop, I don't know what to say, Van. What, I'm sure what has already been said to you by a multitude of people. But let me reiterate it tonight. George and Marty did a fantastic job. I know you were the hardest because I asked them, they said you were. So they had to work overtime. But what a legacy you've left, and it's gonna be big shoes to fill. But we're just blessed to have had you for the thirty-one years. And it's, I'm glad that you're taking a break. But I'm gonna, it's gonna be sad not to see you in the blue. But with that being said, I don't want to drag this thing out. Should I keep talking? Or, okay, we won't drag it out. Counselor?
Your honor, it's, it's my honor to read this proclamation. Whereas the city of Burlington wishes to honor Major Darren J. Grimshaw for over thirty-one years of service as a professional law enforcement officer of the Burlington Police Department, and whereas Darren Grimshaw has provided the citizens of Burlington with outstanding loyal and dedicated service, beginning as a patrol officer on April first, nineteen eighty-eight. During his tenure, he worked all patrol shifts, was assigned to the Criminal Investigation Division, and assigned to the Southeast Iowa Narcotics Task Force. In June of nineteen ninety-three, he was promoted to lieutenant in Patrol Division, and while in this capacity, was selected to attend the one hundred and eighty-sixth session at the FBI, FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia, graduating in September nineteen ninety-six. Darren served as Patrol and Criminal Investigations and Drug Task Force Commander until twenty twelve, when he became the administrative major for the department. Major Grimshaw formally retires on January third, twenty twenty, and now therefore, we, the City Council, the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby recognize and commend Darren Grimshaw for his outstanding service, commitment to the welfare and safety of the citizens of Burlington. We wish him sincere congratulations and much happiness in his retirement. Signed and sealed the sixteenth day of December, twenty nineteen, Shane A. McCambe, Mayor. And I also have a plaque that reads, "The City of Burlington, a great place to live, work, and play. The City of Burlington hereby honors Darren Grimshaw in recognition and appreciation of thirty-one years of dedicated service faithfully and loyally serving the citizens of Burlington. Retired January third, twenty twenty, presented by the Burlington City Council." Mayor, would you like to present this?
Huh?
Would you like to present this?
Go ahead and roll with it, man. Already gave him my hug. Sweating.
Congratulations.
Get in on this, Jimmy. Yeah, Jimmy, get in on this. Everybody get in. Jimmy, come on, man.
This is for you guys.
You're a jerk, man. Recker said he started serving when he was only two years old.
Thank you. Feel free to have a few words.
Thank you. Take your time.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I appreciate that. Mr. Frenel, I was reminded about an hour ago to keep this really quick and short. So I'm gonna listen to the, our boss that's in the audience. Not Chief Kramer, Kristen.
Thanks for the correction.
Well, we all know who the boss is. No, I appreciate this. And I just want to say real quickly, the last thirty-one years, being affiliated with the City of Burlington, and more specifically with the Police Department, has been a, a dream of mine, obviously, from the time I was about thirteen, fourteen years old. And there's a lot of people that, that inspired me to get into law enforcement at an early age, and a lot of people that coached and mentored me over the last thirty-one years. And that list is too long to, to go on here. And I'll have my chance to thank, to thank them personally in the future. But obviously, I, I think my wife is probably more, probably anticipating this retirement more so than I am, the late phone calls and, and the restless nights. But, so I thank her for her support. And obviously, as you said, Mayor, Mom and Dad's direction went a long ways. But I, I will say this, not only to our City Council and to the future City Council members, but to the citizens of Burlington, they should be proud of the men and women that work at the Burlington Police Department. They are some of the finest and most dedicated individuals that I know. Without their support, without their perseverance and their dedication to the job, we wouldn't be able to accomplish what we do on a daily basis, because this is not an easy profession. I have seen tremendous changes over the last thirty-one years. It's becoming more and more difficult to find people that are willing to put themselves in this position. And we should be proud of those that we have working with us now. And I can assure you that the men and women in blue in Burlington are as dedicated as you'll find. And they'll, they'll, they'll do an amazing job as, as the years move forward. But again, thank you very much. Thank you for everything that the city's provided with me, all the opportunities. I really do appreciate the support that I've gotten from the men and women at the Police Department, specifically Chief Beard and Chief Kramer, over the last eight years. And without some of their leadership, and sometimes some of their, maybe correcting some of my wishes and desires, I got here today. So, no, again, thank you very much. And I'm proud and humbled to have been able to provide law enforcement services to the City of Burlington over the last thirty-one years. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
All right. This next one, Sharon's a personal friend. I let her borrow thirty dollars back in the seventies, and she never did pay me back. But I don't hold grudges. That was a joke. Some people don't know how to take me. You know, it's like they're ready for me to leave or something already. But when you, when you put your time in and you have as many years as Sharon has put in as our records clerk, it's worth recognizing. And all of that years of experience is going to be missed. But everybody needs a break at some point in time in their life. And it's break time for Sharon. So we want to recognize her tonight. Peanut butter?
Yes. I am proud and honored to read this proclamation. Whereas the City of Burlington desires to honor Sharon Stonehouse for forty-seven years of service with the City of Burlington, and whereas Sharon has served as a records clerk for the City of Burlington Police Department, beginning her employment on July sixth, nineteen seventy-two, until December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. And whereas Sharon has provided outstanding loyal and dedicated service to the citizens of Burlington, and now therefore, we, the City Council of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby recognize and commend Sharon Stonehouse for her outstanding conscientious and faithful service to the City of Burlington and its Police Department. We further extend our sincere appreciation and congratulations on her retirement. Signed and sealed this nineteenth day, rather, sixteenth day of December, twenty nineteen, the Honorable Shane McCambe. Sharon? And as Sharon is making her way down, I have this wonderful plaque, too, and I'll just briefly read it. The City of Burlington hereby honors Sharon Stonehouse in recognition and appreciation of forty-seven years of dedicated service faithfully and loyally serving the citizens of Burlington. Congratulations on your retirement, Sharon.
It's too late in the day to say anything witty, but thank you very much. It's seemed like a long time, and sometimes it doesn't seem like a long time. So, but it's just time to let younger people do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're gonna get down to the selfish stuff. If there's any of you that want to get out of here now, you're more than welcome to leave.
Or you can stay, too.
Is this cake?
Yeah, that's, that's my cake, actually.
Oh, hit it, hit it.
Yeah, I already slobbered on it, so. Tonight, we're going to, oh, yeah, I'll wait till, thanks for coming down, you guys.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Take your time. Again, for those that may not know, if you don't, we had cake, we had cake and fruit punch at the beginning of the meeting, just to, to say goodbye to Annie and myself. And I was just telling her before the meeting, people probably don't realize this, but my son was taking some classes out to S C C, and I wanted to take some classes with him. Which, yeah, I know, it's nuts. He didn't want me there anyways, but I did, because I wanted to take some college class with my son. And I met this joker out at S C C. And it's just funny how things turn out, because I wasn't happy with what was going out at S C C. And so I said, do they got a student board here? What's going on? And I found Twan, that's what I used to call her, Twan. I found her, and she was down. She was a worker. And she said, I'll help you. And, man, we, we threw out footballs and T-shirts and made videos and harassed people. And I almost think that that was a springboard into stepping up to this, but.
Right. What's next?
I don't know. I don't know.
Who knows?
We'll have to see. I'll have to get permission first from the Grimshaws. But anyways, we do have some Mayor's Awards tonight, and we, we give them out to recognize other people in the community. Tonight, we want to, we want to give them out to our personal, our personal loved ones tonight. Annie, I'll let you, I'll let you start.
Yeah. All right. So I have one here, Mayor's Award. Let it be known, on behalf of City, of the City of Burlington, Iowa.
Come on, let me back up. You have to set it up first, for.
I don't know how to do this. This is why I was never mayor.
Well, you know, let me set it up. You know, we've had long meetings, and you know how kids are. Kids don't like to sit through this stuff. It's nonsense to them. But Addison has just been a sweetheart, and she sat back quietly and put up with so much. And that needs to be recognized. Nobody serves alone. And you know this, because you served with your husband, even though you didn't carry a gun. So we just want to, we just want to recognize some of the people that served with us tonight. And that's what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah. So exactly. She sat in the back and would work on homework sometimes until, what, seven-thirty at a four o'clock meeting? Yeah. So, long nights and cold suppers, as the mayor would say. All right. Let it be known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Thank you for your patience, kindness, generosity, and understanding. In a small way, you served with your mom. You helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to Addison Carden.
Yeah, somebody's gotta get a picture of those, too. And congratulations. I heard you really killing it in basketball. That is correct.
Poli-sai.
That's correct, Van.
First class I took there. You were in the front, I was in the back. We used to argue then.
And I remember you from there, too.
Yeah.
All right. I have more kids than she does, so, but I'll move it right along. And just so if anybody wants to know, none of my kids asked for this, but this is my last meeting as mayor. So I'm gonna do what I want to at this meeting. This first one goes out to my baby number one. We used to be like this before she got old and turned into a jerk. But, but I still love her dearly. And she, she is good about service. We do different types of service, and maybe some of you have seen her at a part-time job out to the, what's it called? The Broadway. And she is a server. Or what, isn't that what they call? Isn't that what you say? That's how fitting is that? Because that's what your dad does. Anyways, I just want to thank my kids for all the times that we went out for dinner. And somebody wanted to talk about city business, and the food got cold. Or every time that we went to the grocery store, and Shaylee had to grab me by the arm and say, Dad, come on, let's go. You know, or the times that I had to go to the store, and my sister said, just tell me what you want, I'll pick it up for you, or you're gonna be too long. So I'm grateful for that. I'm grateful for that. You know, so nobody gave me a hard time. You guys supported me one hundred percent. You know how I am, and it's hard for me to ignore somebody that wants to have a word. So I'm just grateful to my family tonight, I want to recognize, starting with baby number one. She's a jerk, but I love her. You may know her from Waitress out at whatever that place is called, but I know her as baby number one. On behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Thank you for your patience, kindness, generosity, understanding, and your love. In a small way, very small, for that one, you served with me. You helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On December sixteen, two thousand nineteen, everybody thinks I give nicknames out to people just at random. I only give nicknames to people I love. Poopy McCambe. Come on, Dan. Come on, Poop. And if the camera's on, if the camera's on, they don't pay the mayor enough to buy his kid pants. They don't, they don't do something about that. Okay, secondly, I'm going in order. This is my second born. He's also about service, too. He's a volunteer fireman out west Burlington, and he'll be Wednesday. I get to go and put the badge, that you get to put the badge on him, you know. I get to go Wednesday, and he talked over with his wife, and they both decided that they wanted me to do it. So just feeling really good. My son went to the Army, and he was talking all these things, what he was gonna do. And I just kept begging him, Son, come back home to me. Come back to me. And I'm glad my son came back home. I just, oh, he's out in the hallway with my grandson. But I love him. And I didn't do two awards for them, because he's married to Rachel McCambe, and they are one flesh. So I only made one. That's right. But I do, I appreciate Rachel. Anytime I had an event, when I did the painting thing, Rachel painted my shirts for me, so I could go down and look the part and all of that stuff. Always very supportive. And my son, he's my right-hand man. My, my very greatest memory growing up was a birthday that I didn't even have. It was my son's birthday, and we spent the entire day together. We watched movies all day. Do you remember the movies we watched?
Lion, say yeah.
Was Born Identity, was that one of them?
Yeah, that was probably it.
Born Identity, and then a Tom Cruise movie. Anyways, who cares? It was a blast. And, son, my name's sake, I love you. And I, I really appreciate you and your wife. Thank you for your patience, kindness, generosity, understanding, and your love. In a small way, you served with me. You helped make Burlington a great place to work, live, work, and play. On December sixteenth, this Mayor's Award is presented to Shane and Rachel McCambe. Come on, Dan. McCambles, have a word?
You know what? I'm sure I can pre-style something for you.
Don't you pre-stuff, don't you pre-blow. You said my girl's in the love me! That's right.
That's so cute. Oh, now he's upset.
Yeah, yeah.
I know you're thanking everyone else, but I'd like to thank you.
You can't do that.
Yes, I can. I can do whatever I want. I have the microphone.
He's your son.
And now you know why we're both Shane.
He wants to talk.
That's a third-generation Shane right there that he's holding.
I know for a while I've had to share you with the city, which was annoying, because I'm selfish, and I like to share you for myself. And my son, but I thank you for giving me your name. It means a lot. And that's kind of why I gave my son the same name. And you showed me what it's like to be a strong man. And I'd like to be a lot like you. I'm trying my best. I love you, Dad.
I just want you to know, son, if I was as far as you were at your age, I'd be somebody today. You've already surpassed me, son. I love you.
Not even close.
Did anybody else catch that, that he got the last word in on me?
Oh, he did.
That's my boy. All right, next, this little midget, she's the diabetic. I've been dragging her around for years. I'm gonna make it quick, guys, but I've been dragging her around for years, and she's usually always the one that's with me. She's the one that lives with me part-time. When she gets mad, she moves out. But anyways, so right now she's mad at me because she's moved out. But I love Shaylee Fay, and this little jerk, I just don't know. She was born with a disability. She had diabetes at eighteen months, she almost died. And I, I really look to my relationship with my family, my relationship with my Savior, and the fact that I had a, a child with a disability that really helped me be the person that I am today. And I wish she didn't have it, Pig. I really, oh, yeah, yeah, he's Beano. That's his thing. And Pig, I really wish you didn't have diabetes. But I'll tell you what, I love you and that blood sugar, and we just need to make sure we keep it regulated. But just glad to be giving this to you tonight. Thank you for your patience, kindness, generosity, understanding, most of the time, and your love. In a small way, you served with me. Pig, come on down. Come on. Pig?
Hi. For any of those who haven't seen me yet. Hello. I'm Shaylee, or most of you probably know me as Pig. I don't know, I just, I really appreciate all the times that you've literally have dragged me out to events and things. Really meeting a lot of the community and the people I'd never thought that I would get to know or see their face, or be able to see them in public and be like, hey, you know, they do this for our city, or they do this for us. And I don't know, I really, I do, I really appreciate that. I made a lot of friends who are much older than me because of it. And it's a wonderful time. I don't know, I'm just, I'm really proud. Bean made me cry. I think he did the best job. We can just go ahead and say that, hands down. But no, it's, it is a blessing being a McCambe, and being able to say that that's my dad.
I thought you guys were all supposed to be roasting me tonight. We're gonna get serious. This next guy, yeah, I still have more, sorry. This next guy, I'm just about done. We're just about done. This next guy, man, he really changed my world. When he came, I was doing a job at a house. I was working on stilts. And my daughter pulled, pulled up to give me some information. She goes, I want to tell you something. I said, I'm working right now. And I knew something. I just wasn't sure what was going on. She wasn't married at the time. And I said, I don't know what's going on. And she said, she goes, you know what's going on? And I knew what was up. I said, well, you tell me. She goes, I can't tell you, Dad. I said, well, I'm working right now. I'll see you when I get home. And then I got home, and I ignored her for like an hour. But I'll tell you what, I let her know right off, right off the bat, that we were going to, that we looked forward to what was going to be coming. And what came was my grandson, Keegan Ray. And he's been a joy. I love him. I, I get the opportunity to take him to school a couple of times a week, and we jam the same song every morning. We have the same breakfast every morning. What do we have, Grant?
Toasters.
Toasters, troodles, and the best orange juice. That's what he told me. He said, Grandpa, this orange juice is delicious. Once you said that, that's the only guy I buy now. But I just, what a blessing. Everywhere I see you, I always say, man, there's my grandson. So happy to see you, Grand. And thank you for putting up with all the mess, because you've been with Grandpa where he's got stopped and stuff, too. And you've always been real cool about it. I'm really excited to be giving this to you. Thank you for your patience, kindness, generosity, understanding, and your love, grandson. I call him Ten Grand, because he's ten years old. I think I'll call him Eleven Grand after next year. In a small way, you served with me, grandson. You helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On December sixteenth, this Mayor's Award is presented to Keegan McCambe. Come on down. I got a song that I made up for him. He thinks I'm. Grandson, grandson, mama, mama, my grandson. Grandson, grandson, grandson. He's my grandson. Grandson, would you like that word? All right.
Shane, I think you should record that song.
You know what? I really need to patent it or something. What do you call that? Trademarked. On behalf of your, thank you for your patience, kindness, generosity, understanding, and your love. In a small way, you served with me. This one, even though he's not even old to understand, old enough to understand that he's getting it from me, I could not not give my other grandson, who loves me, and be honest with you, he'd be sitting on my lap right now, but he's, he's a wild one. But I wanted to give this to the third-generation Shane. I know, my son's like, Dad, you're stupid. That's right. Stupid enough to be mayor. But that's for you, grandson. I love you. I got a different song for you, but I won't sing it. That's just private. No, Grandpa. I got you Tuesday. We're gonna party tomorrow. I got you tomorrow. We're gonna party. Sound my calendar? I'm gonna miss calling a mission for that. I know. He's gonna take care of me. This last one, she didn't even know anything about it. But I would not be here. I, I recognize your parents. And I would not be the person I am without Leroy and Betty. And they can't be here. They are gone. But my baby sister, my A-one from day one, and she has a nickname, too. It's Biba. Her name's Melinda. It's Biba because of me. When they came home, they said, look at the little, look at the little baby. I said, oh, look at the little baby. And, and everybody kept making fun of me. And so we still call her Biba or Biebs to this. this day. Uh, but she's my baby sister, she travels with me, uh, to church, um, she comes up with me up to both churches, actually, uh, when she, when she's able, but, um, I appreciate you, sis. Uh, you know, I've been divorced for a long time, so you've tried to pick up slack and help me to wear nice clothes and that sort of thing, you know? I'd be so lost. But I appreciate you. Thank you for your patience, your kindness, generosity, understanding and your love, sis. In a small way, you just served with me too. Uh, on December 16th, this Mayor's Award is presented to Melinda McCamell, uh, and Leroy and Betty. Would you come and receive this, please, Lucy?
It is a sad shame, at forty-eight, I'm still Biba, but that's all right. I never, ever thought that you would be the mayor.
Go easy. I mean, I'm emotional, I've only got one feeling left. Go easy.
It's your turn. Go ahead, it's your turn.
Back in the day, when you were Evel Knievel, jumping stairs and doing all those things, we were just glad that you were alive. But to look at you now, Mom and Dad would be so proud. And it's not for who you are, it's for who you are. The heart that you have, the love that you give, the kindness that you share, that's what makes you special to me. I love you, Shane.
I love you, sis. Okay, I know what's going on here. I know what you're trying to do here. Let me do this last one, this wasn't on the agenda, but, uh, I just can't, uh, move on any further unless I recognize this person. Um, I, I run just like a wild dog sometimes, and I forget, I'll, I'll, I'll commit to something in a grocery store, and then the first thing I do is I'll send a text to Kathleen and say, hey, can I do this? And she'll rearrange my schedule to make it work. But, uh, on behalf of the City of Burlington, I, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. You're a rock star. Of all the people at City Hall, you're one of those I love the most. And I mean that. And you can tell your husband, because it's righteous love. You helped make Burlington a great place to live, work and play. And you definitely helped Mayor be all that I could be. Thank you, Berg.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. Open it up, Earl. Would you have a word?
Um, this afternoon, I was trying to figure out how many mayors I've worked for. And actually, um, Shane is the thirteenth mayor I've worked for. They say thirteen's an unlucky number, but I feel quite lucky and even blessed to have worked with you. So, thank you so much.
I know what you're all thinking. You're thinking, I wasted my evening to come down here for this? It wasn't a waste, you could get a piece of cake on the way out. All right. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna wrap this up. Now is, uh, time for recognition of council members. I don't have anything to recognize, so...
So, I guess Kathleen felt like she couldn't do this, I'm not sure why. Um, it's typically the mayor that would do this, and if the mayor is one of those who is being recognized, it would be the mayor pro tem. So, we're in a position where the people who normally give out awards are, are, uh, the ones being awarded. And it wouldn't be surprising if the mayor did it himself to himself, because I thought he had done it on the calendar already, looking through those mayor's awards. But I will do this. And mine will be shorter than yours.
I'm sure.
Uh, this is in grateful recognition of Antoinette Annie Wilson. Thank you for your outstanding and faithful service as a city council member for the City of Burlington, Iowa. I've only gotten to work with you for four years, but it's been a pleasure. Uh, you have brought a sense of decorum that the mayor did not bring. You have brought a sense of balance and, uh, your perspective has been much appreciated. So, I have appreciated your service over the last four years, from January 2016 through December 2019. Thank you for also serving in the capacity of mayor pro tem from January 2018 through December 2019. Presented by the City of Burlington and the City Council.
Oh, no, no, oh, no. Well, we gotta get a picture, for sure.
Get some new kicks.
Do you want to say a word?
What?
You got some new bottles?
You like those?
Juan, please have some words. But yes, yes.
Well, it's been quite an amazing, uh, four years, and of all the people, you know, I get to work with, from city staff to different council members, uh, it's just been an amazing learning process and as much as I've learned from all of you, I hope that you've learned a little bit, something from me too, because that's what, uh, you know, this whole thing's all about. Just had a great team behind me as far as family and, uh, everything that everyone's done for me, I'm so appreciative of it. And I hope I get to come back. I guess we'll see, time will tell. But I hope more people get involved as well. So, more younger people and a variety, because that's what makes this whole thing work. That's, that's all I have right now, before I cry. So, thank you all.
We have one other award.
Let's run it.
Eight years ago, when I started here, uh, got to see somebody who was the wild card of the group. And eight years later, he's the only member left, and I've discovered he is still the wild card of the group. I've appreciated you over the last eight years, though, Mayor. This is in grateful recognition of Shane A. McCamell. Thank you for your outstanding and faithful service as a city council member for the City of Burlington, Iowa, January 2012 through December 2019. Thank you for also serving in the capacity of mayor from January 2014 through December 2019, presented by the City Council.
Johnny Baker. Appreciate you, brother. Peanut, peanut high five. Well, it was eight years on council, six as mayor, so... Jimmy, you need to get in.
You too.
So, you set a calendar. I'll be brief. Um, I started, um, in 2012, and, uh, when I started, we were, we were having some problems with, uh, even making payroll. And, um, we've really just come a long way. Um, I had, I had a lot of people that I leaned on when I, when I first got on council that gave me, uh, some really good advice, and, uh, I want to thank all the past mayors that, that offered so much good advice to me and that were encouraging to me. I, I got a text from, uh, I got an email from Timmy Scott, he said, I can't make it, but he gave me some encouragement. And I, I saw, uh, Mayor Healan on the way down, and he shot me a text, he said, I can't be there with you tonight. He said, but, he gave me some encouragement. It wasn't anything new, he had done that multiple times, uh, to help me. And when I first started, you guys know, Jimmy says, you know, he's a wild card, uh, I'm a different cat. And I, and I realize that. I realize that. You gotta know who you are. And, uh, you know, I'm a, I'm a different guy. And so, uh, I think it took a while for me to grow on Burlington, um, but, uh, all good things must come to an end. I, I think, uh, I think I grew on some of you a little bit, and I tried my best to represent the City of Burlington everywhere I was. I did my best to represent the City of Burlington, uh, my, my Lord and Savior and my parents, and to make people proud. I didn't want to, uh, do a disservice to the position. And if you think that I did, I tried not to. So, that's as, that's as good as it gets, but, um, just very pleased with the opportunity. It's been such a learning experience, the things that I gotta do, uh, even though I still get raked over the coals for fireball run. It's something that I would have never, I know, right?
How about these terms, though?
Dart. I'm just making, but, but, uh, it's something that I would never would have done. Uh, you know, it really caused me to get outside of the box. People say, Shane, you, you're outgoing, you'd love to talk and, to people and stuff like that, but the people that really know me, they know, I'm, I'm really a quiet person. When I'm at home, I can sit in silence for days. I, I just, uh, I don't, I don't need a lot of words, I spend a lot of time up in the box. That's scary. That's scary. But, um, through it all, with the, with the nicknames and people being mad about that and, uh, how I run my meetings, you know, people said, I need to, I need to clean up how I run my meetings and those sort of things, um, to me, I think the most important thing is to get the job done. And I'd like to, I hope that you guys think that I got the job done and the position that I was given. Not saying that I did anything by myself, it was a group effort, but, um, I hope that I did my part. And in closing, I would just like to say that, um, you know, they asked, Leah asked me, she said, well, what's your legacy? And I, I don't think anybody can say what their legacy's gonna be, it just, it just is what it is. I said, but I, I'd like to thank that, um, when it's all said and done, when I leave, that they say, well, city council was better because of Shane. That, that's all you can ask for. I want them to say that. You know, the City of Burlington was better because Shane McCamell was in it. Not that it was worse and the people that I encountered and, and all the people that I still can encounter, I hope that you say after I, that you have a conversation with me, that you say, hey, I'm better off or I'm happier because I had a conversation with Shane. And I think that's all you can ask for. I can't say it was like that all the time, but that was my goal. So, thanks for putting up with me for eight years and, uh, being a part of my life, allowing me to be a part of yours. Um, it's just been, it's just been fantastic. Uh, I couldn't have rid it out any better, so, uh, I'm truly grateful to the Lord for what he has done, uh, in my life. So, thank you. And I didn't cry. So, let's get down to business. Uh, next we have, if there's anybody that wants to leave now, uh, we just have a few things just to finish up, so we'll give you a chance to get on out of here. Thanks for coming down, guys. If you didn't get a piece of cake, we encourage you to grab a piece of cake on the way out. Good to see you. And we'll just wait for a minute. Thanks for coming down, Super. I love you. Thanks for coming down, love. You're the best. Poof, love you. Biebs. Pig. I'm proud of you. That's my line, don't be stealing my line. Proud of you, son.
I love all those nicknames, I'm like, great.
Yeah, they're jerks. Miss Pig. Okay, uh, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed under item one consent agenda having been discussed or considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be discovered, or will be discussed, I'm sorry, separately. Uh, on the agenda tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine and cigarettes reports and bonds. And we also have four resolutions. The first is resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is resolution approving an agreement with Stanley Consultants for engineering services related to reconstruction of Harrison Avenue. The third is resolution approving engagement letter with Piper Jaffray and Company to serve as an underwriter for insurance to general obligation bond anticipation project notes, series two nineteen D. Then the fourth is resolution approving engagement letter with Piper Jaffray and Company to serve as underwriter for issuance of general obligation corporate purpose and refunding bonds, series twenty twenty A, twenty twenty B, twenty twenty C, including tax exempt and taxable series. Is there anybody that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent? I see none. Council?
I'm fine.
Good.
Looks good.
I motion to approve all listed under item one consent agenda.
Second.
Moved to second. Kathleen.
McCamell?
Aye.
Riker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, now it's time for consideration of a general obligation loan agreement and a principal amount not to exceed four million eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. James?
So, this is, uh, given that we need to stay under ten million in a given year for, to maintain bank qualification, uh, gives us a better interest rate. Uh, we needed to get some borrowing done this year. This was necessitated by the decision from the water department to issue a GO bond this next year that will, that falls in and is included in our ten million cap. So, we, uh, had, Piper Jaffray went out and contacted our local banks. Uh, we had a pretty tight timeframe, uh, the majority of them weren't able to work within the timing that we were given, but we did have two that had responded back, uh, Two Rivers Bank and US Bank. Uh, different, uh, options were done, uh, with them. Uh, US Bank had actually a lower interest rate, uh, than Two Rivers, but Two Rivers, uh, did not have a requirement that we draw the whole, uh, four point eight million down. Uh, they, they were allowing us to draw it down just fifty thousand initially, uh, to then close it out in June when we would, uh, be wrapping up financing into a new bond issue next year. Uh, the only purpose here, we're not needing the funds to expense against projects prior to June one, uh, so that kind of schedule worked best for us, uh, was the cheapest of the two alternatives that was there, but we certainly appreciated both of the offers that we got. Um, the recommendation from Piper Jaffray after they had gone through that process was to move forward with, uh, approving the debt issuance, uh, with Two Rivers as, uh, borrowing, the, the borrower, whatever, the...
Lender.
The lender, thank you, we're the borrower. Um, this will go towards, this is going towards the projects we have on our CIP this next year. Uh, notably, we have the flood wall as a major project and a ma, a street project as well as the, the two main components that we'll be doing borrowings for this next year. Again, the water department was, uh, looking to, is doing a four and a half million dollar, uh, infrastructure borrowing themselves. That's it.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Council?
Moved to close.
Moved to second. Kathleen?
McCamell?
Aye.
Riker?
Yes.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
I have a resolution determining to enter into loan agreement and authorizing issuance of four million eight hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, general obligation bond anticipation note, notes.
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen?
McCamell?
Aye.
Riker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
All right. Uh, number two is consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property located at three thirteen North Roosevelt Avenue. Roosevelt Avenue, Zone C2 general commercial, to also include our four multifamily residential and a planned unit development overlay zone as allowed by the zoning code of the city of Burlington, Iowa. Does do.
This is a request to rezone property locally known as a former Shopko property there at 313 North Roosevelt Avenue. They are looking to include our four multifamily residential on the southwest corner of the property and a PUD overlay that'll have some additional requirements. This did go to the Planning Commission on November 19th, and they voted five to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning based on the request and plans of the property owner, based on the adaptive reuse of an existing large box building, maintaining commercial frontage along Roosevelt Avenue, Highway 61, and similar redevelopment of land uses on the east side of Roosevelt Avenue. So again, this would maintain C2 general commercial on the frontage along Roosevelt Avenue, this boxed area here, while the existing building and some of the land around it would be required or allowed as our four multifamily residential. Some of the requirements of the PUD include maintaining a landscape buffer between the two different zoning uses, a 30-foot wide landscape buffer between the R4 and C2 district, maintaining the architectural design guidelines of the city, having a continuous pedestrian connection from the R4 zoned area to the intersection of Roosevelt Avenue and Market Street, which would connect to the east side of Roosevelt Avenue. As discussed at the council meeting, did put in a provision to allow 1.5 spaces per unit for units that are 800 square feet or smaller, with a maximum of 20 of those units allowed. That would reduce the parking potentially by 10 spaces for some of those smaller units that typically would only have one resident or one vehicle within them. And then just some language on signage access, and again, architectural design. But the primary change is allowing residential in the existing building while maintaining that commercial storefront, or commercial frontage on Roosevelt. They did submit a concept plan as part of the PUD, shown here. The main building being residential units with the option or possibility for commercial frontage or commercial building on Roosevelt, possible outbuilding there in the north, which could be restaurant or retailer or different things. But these buildings on the east side of the property would be required to be commercial One of the submitted drawings for the redevelopment of the building, just an example of what it could look like if it was redeveloped as residential. Representative of the developers here as well, if you have additional questions.
Where's the rep? There's the rep. Any questions? Any questions or concerns from the audience? Since the rep is here, you got anything you want to say?
Um, not really. Nothing we haven't already spoken about.
We can appreciate that. Right on. Counsel?
No concerns here.
No.
All right. Let me get a motion.
Your Honor, have a motion to close?
Second.
Moved to second. Kathleen?
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Your Honor, have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance rezoning a property located at 313 North Roosevelt Avenue, Zone C2 general commercial, to also include our four multifamily residential and a planned unit development overlay zone as allowed by the zoning code of the city of Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
I just have it. Resolutions.
Your Honor, I have a corrective resolution approving termination and reversion... reverse, I can't say that, of real estate purchase agreement concerning the property locally known as 424 North Third Street, city of Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
This previously came forward to City Council. This is in regards to the previous development agreement on the former police department building at 424 North Third Street, where there was an option to purchase it and potentially redevelop as a hotel at the time. This was filed with county. There was an error found in the legal description. So this is coming back forward to correct that legal description and bring forward that termination so that it's all filed correctly with the county and the city with the proper legal description and property. And then we'll file a quick claim deed as well, I guess, in anticipation of a potential future development agreement for that building as well. We want to make sure everything was cleaned up and, I guess, recognize that there was an error in that legal description that we're correcting now.
We do have another developer that has had an interest. In fact, we have a, we had a four-month agreement with that developer that expires the end of December. It has the option to extend it for a period of time. They're supposed to put forward a piece of funding to make that happen. Now, they have put forward their proposed development agreement for that project. We haven't brought that to the council. It's to the attorney at this point. They will, with that agreement, be asking for an extension and requesting that we waive the fee for the extension, given that they do have it filed. It's just, given the way our council meetings line up, outside of having special meetings around Christmas time, which doesn't make a tremendous amount of sense. We're not under any time crunch on this. I don't see a reason why we wouldn't be doing that. But just so you know, that there will be a further development agreement being brought forward to you to consider in January.
Okay, good. Jim, what was the name of that developer again?
There'll be Merge LLC.
Merge. Thank you.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? Joe, you good? It's good to see you tonight. Counsel?
No questions.
Kathleen?
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Number two.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the five-year road plan for fiscal year 2021 through 2025.
Second.
Mr. McGregor?
Good evening. If you throw up that slideshow, I'm going to... You have the... Yep. Okay. As I go through the slideshow, I did make an addition to the agenda material. You will notice in there, there is actually a printout of what the five-year road plan contains on an annual basis. And then there's a cost estimate. And then off to the side, it describes whether or not it has grant funding, but then it also totals it up as well. This is something I think they used to do a long time ago, and the practice kind of went away. But I kind of like having a tangible document as far as a five-year road plan that you're approving, instead of just a map. But as I jump into it, this is a map of the overall proposed road plan. I will do a year-by-year breakdown of what those projects entail. For fiscal year 21, which you'll see these projects be developed over the next couple of months and bid out, it includes Central from Angular south to Harrison Street to be a mill and fill overlay project. The section in brown is what I classify as the North Hill Asphalt Project. We have a project that's currently been bid out. This is kind of the rest of those roadways. So it's quite a bit of asphalt overlay work in the North Hill area. The last project on there is something that we have not done before. It is out on West Avenue and sections of gear. It is a dial bar retrofit. As you drive it, you'll notice that there's quite a bit of a rideability issue on there.
What'd you call that last time?
My technical term that I have copyrighted is hippity-skipity, I think.
That's a winner, man. I love that.
The problem is, the actual, the concrete itself is in actually pretty good shape, given the age. The issue is rideability. But as time continues, what, there's some leveling and faulting in between the panels, and ultimately it can lead towards cracking. And so what this project is set out to do is preserve the lifespan of that concrete and make it eligible for a future overlay when needed. So it'll be a dial bar retrofit, which I have that project kind of highlighted here on this image. They go in there and they cut and they put dial bars in there, and then a diamond grind over top kind of levels out the whole surface. And I have spoken with West Burlington. They suffer from some of the same problem on gear. I show kind of where the city brake line is out on gear. For fiscal year 22, this is the big change, I guess, from one five-year road plan to a next, and that's Harrison Street. As you, you'll notice, there's a cost estimate of 4.8 million. You just approved the design contract with Stanley Consultants to do that work. It entails a lot more than what we had originally set out in the last iteration of the five-year road plan. This was supposed to be a mill and fill overlay project with asphalt. When we did core samples last winter, we found that the concrete underneath was powder, and it was not the best route to head down for the longevity of the road. So then we looked at doing PCC replacement. And as the city engineer and myself spoke about it, we realized there was a lot of combined sewer system connected in that area. And if we're going in to do replacement with PCC, it's the perfect time to go in and do the sewer separation, because that's a lot of the cost when doing that sewer work is the pavement replacement. So you see that project there. And then Washington Street, I talked about it last time and I screwed it up again, is Main Street. Main Street from Angular to the north, where Highway 34 is, and that's part of the Tiger Grant. It's funded by Tiger, so there's not a concern from a roadway design. There is some sewer work that we'll have to take care of, but I didn't want to talk about that too much by the grant. So fiscal year 23, another Tiger Grant project is the Jefferson Street corridor, and that is funded by Tiger. There's no sewer work underneath there, and that needs to be done. But that is covered by the grant. Madison/9th Street is an SCBG grant application that went through a couple of years ago. It is a mill and fill project from Harrison to south, and then from south northward, it is a PCC replacement for concrete. For fiscal year 24, this year has changed some, mostly because we were able to move stuff forward from the years before that. So on there is an SCBG grant application that we were able to get the full funding for, and that's in Agency Street. It's a full-depth reconstruction of concrete from the edge of Melrose Court, I believe, is the area. But it's where we ended most recently with the last project, and it goes eastwardly to Curran. It will replace all the concrete and then it'll add some sidewalk. But that is 80% funded by SCBG. With that, containing within our normal $1.5 million borrowing of GO, we're able to tackle Terrace, Johansson, Hagaman for asphalt work. Added on the summary sheet is Washington Street. It's actually a SCP, back when they, before they changed the acronyms. We received $867,000 for an asphalt overlay project on Washington. Because of the ensuing work that we're doing with Tiger Grant on Jefferson and Main Street, I thought it'd be beneficial to bring that up to a different standard. For one, concrete has a longer lifespan than asphalt. It's probably 20 to 30 years longer. And so this project estimated, oh, man, at 4.8 million, would include the 867,000 grant. But the remainder of that would be funded by tax increment financing, and it would take concrete work from Front Street all the way to just past the intersection at Snake Alley. And then the rest would have some rehab, but a lot of it would be mill and fill from Sixth Intersection to the bridge deck at Central. Fiscal year 25 was part of our conversation, and my first iteration of this included Sunnyside. But because of the borrowing amounts, we looked at Summer. When, I guess I can talk kind of the in-depth part of the SCBG grant application, but the amount that I had discussed prior was 1.8. Because of some SCBG grant requirements in there, you'll see that it's 2.9 million dollars. But you can see the split of the grant amount and what the city would require. And that amount would be within the normal borrowings for general obligation. So I'll leave Summer, or Summer Street SCBG grant application to my conversation here in a second. But be answered any questions if you'd like.
Let's start with the audience. Any questions from the audience?
No, I can't let this one go.
Yes, I do.
First question, with these projects, is there any parking, on-street parking that is currently, except for the Tiger Grant, that's going to be removed with any of these projects besides Madison Avenue?
Should be no.
No.
Okay. Secondly, I know I'm speaking, I know this is going to go through, but I still got to...
Look it out, man.
I got to speak about it, and that's my opposition to the Madison Avenue. You're taking, you know, and again, one of the statements said, when it was passed, was "We need the money." Yet you're hurting the taxpayers, taxpayers and homeowners who live along that street. Most of the money being spent on that is being spent on the 9th Street, not on Madison Avenue. Madison Avenue portions is getting an overlay and no new curbing, per se. And part of the resolution said to be safer street, but the bike lanes will not be safe for kids, according to the grant, the age that was given. So I guess I ask you to change that Madison Avenue one again, but I know that's not going to happen. But I still got to keep on speaking against it because it doesn't help the taxpayers. You're spending money from Madison Avenue on other things that you're hurting the taxpayers of that street. Granted, I don't live in that section anymore, but I did. So it doesn't help them. I'd like you to see, to reject that again, STB, that grant, and just keep you on-street parking. That's what I got to say with that. So it's not going to help the neighborhood. It doesn't serve the purposes of, the bike lanes will not serve the purposes for which you will think. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Chris, I appreciate your consistency, friend. Anybody else from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Let's put, do you want to say something?
No.
No. I was just going to tell Nick it looks good.
And let's put this to bed. Kathleen?
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Number three.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the state of Iowa and Southeast Iowa Regional Planning for STBG funds for improvements on Summer Street from Harrison Avenue to Kestner Street intersection.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. McGregor?
As I alluded to at the end of the last conversation, the grant application proposed in front of you, you'll notice that the application is not completed, mostly because of the change in direction. Because of when we had the borrowing conversation, we switched gears. But after reviewing it and looking at the SCBG grant requirements, when it comes to SUDAS or the state urban design, oh, man, the design standards, forgive me, requires you to put back, if you accept the funds, which are federal funds, requires you to follow those standards. The current width of the lanes on Summer don't meet the arterial roadway requirements that are set in SUDAS. And so you'll notice the inflation of what I had at the 1.8 million dollar was simply a replacement in concrete. And so the reason why it jumps to 2.9 is we have to expand the roadway width some to put some curb and gutter, and then also storm sewer, because unfortunately you couldn't just taper it off. The shoulder wouldn't allow it. So it required us to go a little bit further by adding some width there. Luckily, we have enough room throughout that corridor, but it just means a little bit more work. I think it will ultimately end in a better, a better product, especially with the storm sewer. We're able to get some of that water flowed through a better direction than the means it has now. It's got some ditch work as it gets further south, and it gets kind of hung up on some of those driveway tubes. But I can answer any questions. I don't have the grant application for you, but I can, the only thing that is different than going back is the width requirement that we're having to do. There's nothing special about it, other than the width that we're trying to put it back at. put it back at.
But Nick, on that, on that storm sewer work, is, is that going to be anything that will improve the situation there?
Yeah, and I think it'd actually help out a lot of people's, the ditch work, especially between Hillary to Kestner, especially on the eastern side, it's a fairly steep ditchway. On the SUDAS specs, I think it needed a certain percent grade. It doesn't even have that now, and so we'll be able to put some intakes in there and probably be able to fill that ditch most of the way in.
Okay, good.
Nick, remind me again, we've got a, a multi-use path planned in that area at some point.
I, I know that the bike ped plan is being updated, and actually, I think I have a meeting with that in, in the next couple of days. I know that they've discussed coming down Summer. It will, I think the work here will not prohibit us to do some sort of a trail along Summer from Harrison South, so she has, it goes by the airport, and trying to connect it to the park. I've already had some preliminary conversations with SAC on how, how you do that.
Does it make sense to do these two projects together?
It does. This grant application has a four-year funding date. TAP, or the Transit Alternatives, has a turnaround time quicker than that, so we would able, we'd be able to submit another grant, the, the TAP grant, within, I think, two years and still have the funding available to do a trail project side by side with this roadway project.
Okay.
So it doesn't exclude it from being able to be done.
Yeah, that was my biggest concern.
Okay. Got any questions from the audience? CR.
I have to, yeah, after being, Chris Ruckey, 2228 Madison Avenue.
After being on the, receiving any of a bad STB grant, or not anymore. So this doesn't include a trail project at this time?
No.
No, okay. All right, that's all I wanted to ask. I'll make a comment later, then I'll close it. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else on our last resolution? Okay. Counsel, are we satisfied?
Yes.
That's good. Kathleen, let's take care of it.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
All right. Now at this time, we will entertain comments from the audience. Is there one tonight? Dino?
Hello.
Hello.
I know I haven't been here for a while, but I've been looking for a job and they got one, so I just got off. Basically, my name is Dean Finicia, living 22117 Northern Drive. I'm a bermitorium. Okay, I know I've been out of the loop, but there's a couple of things, I'm trying to make this quick, because I know everybody wants to get back home. Number one, I bought a motel you're gonna, you're gonna build by the river. Don't give him, don't, I can't, tiff, don't give no tiff to him, to whoever it is, I don't know what it is, but it floods down there, and I can't see why we, we should put a motel down there where if I got a place, it could be almost right next to the river. And if he wants to do that, it's just like, I used to work with big moneys, when, you know, when it was there. The guy was real nice, and it had a big flood, and he had to take all of his money, because Sharon Spade for any heart of it, all of his money to rebuild that, and he said, the next has big flood, I am not going to do it. Maybe Mother Nature's trying to tell us that maybe we should not build anything right next and near the river. Plus, also here, the senior center's gonna move down to the railroad depot. Well, now you got them barriers up by the bermitorium and, and the Port Burlington. What's happening? Well, the water's going toward the bermitorium. No, the bermitorium, I'm sorry, I'm tired. That, that, to the railroad depot, and you're gonna spend more money just trying to keep the water out of there. So that, I, I don't see, why don't you get the seniors to fix the roof where the senior citizens thing is on Jefferson Street? I think that, and is that guy in the bermitorium still working on the old high school? Does anybody know? Yes or no? He still is? Good, because like I said before, I think we gotta turn that into senior apartments, apartments, little shops, something like that. Now, the mayor, I know you for years. I think that you've been, in my lifetime, you've been a darn good mayor. We had a little disagreements, but I think you've been, because I think that you are resident, resent, I can't say it right. You represent, yeah, that you're the, you care about the people in this town, you care about the community, you care about this town, and every time you're here, you have a big smile, and I think it lights up the whole room. And I want to miss you, and you too, and wish you best of luck, and all of you, this article correct, may the Lord Jesus Christ give you wisdom and guidance in your daily life, and, and here in the city council. And one more thing.
Where's my Christmas card?
And, and, okay, here, here I go. You will not be here on New Year's either, so here we go. I wish you a Merry Christmas, I wish you a Merry Christmas, and I wish Merry Christmas to the police and the firemen, you do a good job, and you do too, and a Happy New Year. And one more thing, I know you're tired of hearing about this, I know you don't like it, but I still say Cascade Bridge, Cascade Bridge, Cascade Bridge. Merry Christmas and have a wonderful New Year.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you, Dean.
And it wouldn't be the same if you left here without saying Cascade Bridge.
Yeah, you're very loyal to that bridge, we appreciate it.
That's right. Anybody, and Merry Christmas to my friend.
Have you been good these years?
No.
He has not. The rest of us have, though.
I figured I might as well be honest on my way out, so I've been in between.
Hi, I'm Joanne Bauer, 2523 Sunnyside Avenue, even though our street's not going to be fixed. I want to tell Annie and Shane, I want to thank you all for the citizens of Burlington, I'm gonna pretend I've talked to everybody in town, for having served this city in such a manner and with such respect, and helping bring this city back, and we appreciate it. And thank you so much for your time, your service, and your sacrifice.
Thank you, Jo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. I, growing up, Mikey was one of my best friends. I was so excited when he got to come to my birthday party, and we left everybody, and me and him hung out and played for like an hour. I don't know if anybody remembers that, still think people are holding grudges on that, when they got invited to my party, and me and Mikey end up playing the whole time. Anyways, any other comments from the audience? You're probably wondering who Mikey is, anyways, it's a, it's a long story. CR.
Sorry, I said I'd come back, though.
I know, I'm a broken Chris Ruckey, 2228, and congratulations on retiring and maybe going to Africa.
Thank you.
So anyways, 2228 Madison, when you do consider the bike lanes or bike paths, consider that they have a purpose. Just putting them in and they're not being used or don't connect to anything really don't help, and complete it. For example, the one in Mason, 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 that's nice, but it really isn't completed. I mean, it stops at a two-foot sidewalk, it never went to another street, it just kind of ends, you know? You know, I mean, you still gotta, so I mean, complete stuff, make sure it'll be used. I really don't see anybody use Mount Pleasant Street, you know, from Roosevelt West, and then it's not really safe, because it's not cleaned often. You know, you see rocks and debris in it all. So I mean, if you're gonna do those projects, make sure it's going to be used, it serves a purpose, it's connected. Just don't put something in that just ends. If it doesn't, I mean, it, it needs to have that connection. Oh, we don't have enough money for it. Well, then if you want to do it right, do it right, just don't do it halfway. So thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you, Chris. Anybody else from the audience? Councilman?
Robert Kreitzer, 810 North Fifth. Part of the, the paths, you know, we're gonna have to promote those things that they're out there and to use them and maybe get some, some events going where we can all participate at the same time. But I wanted to address something you said earlier about meeting Annie out at the college and kind of feeling like that connection started there and led you to here. When I lived on South 12th and we had that little corner in the alley and had you and Jose and some good neighbors over there, meeting you really started me on that path. I remember when you ran for council, I had your sign up forever, and then you told me I had to put it in my garage, because we were gonna get in trouble. But we hung on to that, but I just wanted to say the impact that you've had on the people around you, that's legit, like it's the McCambo effect. I know that Summer in '07, we worked together de-tasseling, your kids worked for us, and just having you in that little corner, and, and you always are encouraging people in the community to get out there and put yourself out there. I can't say that I would be as involved as I am had I not had you as a neighbor. So, you know, I, I don't know how we got brought together that way, but I'm glad that we did.
Me too.
And I told Annie when I showed up tonight that I wasn't here to replace her, I was here to replace you, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew.
Well said, brother, well said, and I think we all, as soon as said, to Burlington, could appreciate that. Anybody else close their remarks? We're good? You guys have been fantastic tonight, thank you so much for putting up with most of my stuff. We're gonna get, get you out of here real quick. Tisdale. Tisdale is closing out, not from the top, but from the middle. Kathleen? Kathleen's good? I certainly appreciate you, you're the best. Peanut Butter?
I sure am gonna miss Shane and Annie, they've done a great job, I appreciate your service, I won't belabor the situation, but I wanted to share with you an opportunity I had this, this week, last week, rather. I got to spend 24 hours with the fire department. Did you hear that? 24 hours?
No.
I supposed to, as inside joke, I'm supposed to tease them out about. But anyway, it was a, a great opportunity to really see how the fire department functions. I had no idea, and I learned that I was too sloth-like, I was too slow to be an effective fireperson. I actually missed one of my transports, but I am in awe of everything they do. They get one minute to get out of that building during the day, two minutes at night. I mean, we are so blessed to have the fire department that we have in Burlington, Iowa. I truly can say that from the bottom of my heart after spending time with you guys. Wow, I am in awe. But I wanted to wish everyone a happy holiday, and we won't meet again until after the holidays, so best wishes for a wonderful Christmas, and everybody be safe, enjoy your loved ones, and sad day for us tomorrow in Burlington, but hang in there.
Peanut Butter, right on. JB?
Well, this is no offense to our council elect or any of the candidates, but I'll be honest, I begged both to stay, because I, not because I didn't think we could find some, some qualified people, but I really admire Annie, admire your leadership. I wish I was as plugged in as you are at your age, really think I, I could have achieved something worthwhile and lasting, so hats off to you, but you're, you're taking off the right reasons. So, and so yes, if you decide to come back, if I'm around, we'll welcome you back with open arms, because we need your expertise. And this, the other, the other one, I will say that you and I have known each other for a while, and not like it has been the last two years, and I'm really gonna miss you, my friend. I talked to you.
Give me some on that, my friend.
I talk to him a couple of times a day, and a lot of times when it's time to ride, you say ride, we ride. And man, you've done a, you've set a standard that few are gonna measure up to, I've said that before, about being a mayor and about being a cheerleader for Burlington, and that's all I've ever desired to do, is cheerlead for Burlington. It's a great town, and we ought to be proud of it every day, even in times of, of turmoil. It's a great town, and you've done a great job leading us. So thank you both. Plan on phone calls and texts, because they're gonna be coming, we'll need, we need you to stay involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to close out just by saying again, this has been a fantastic experience. I encourage anybody that if you have, somebody laughed at me because I said about reading and comprehension skills, but it's the truth. You can, if you can understand what you're reading, then that means you can make sense of it, you understand. And once you can comprehend it, you can explain it to somebody else. When I, when I started council, I didn't know anything about city, city business, just because I separated, not because I didn't have the acumen, I just separated myself from it, I just didn't feel like it was something for me as a minister, that sort of thing. But when I was compelled to run for city council, and then I got on, you know, things began to, things began to change for me, and my, my eyes were opened, and I realized there's a whole lot to this, but somebody gave me the information that I gave them a while back, and that I give to all the kids at school. If you can read it and understand what you're reading, as simple as that sounds, then you can do it, you can learn. And it doesn't matter if you're a, if you're a nuclear scientist, I don't care, I really don't, and this may sound arrogant, well, this isn't for me, this is anybody. You give me the same information, you give me the same knowledge that he got a chance to learn, or she got a chance to learn, and give it to me, and I'm, I feel like, you know, hey, then I could be a nuclear scientist, too. I may not be the best one, but, but give me his information, I want to read it. And I encourage everybody that if they, if they have a desire to want to serve, if they have the stomach for politics, if they have thick skin, and if they love their community, it's a great opportunity. Again, I would have never done the things that I've done over these last eight years if it wasn't for city council, except for going to the school and reading to the kids. That I was doing before city council, and they can't take away from me. So again, just encouraging everybody out there. Thanks for those that were supportive, thanks for those that weren't, it's just part of the process, but this has been a fantastic eight years. Again, all of you have made it so special. Twan, we rolled hard the last four years, and Jimmy Jam, I don't even really like him, but, but I respect you. And it's funny, before, the other day, we were up, me and Leah, she had to come and get some more answers, and I was here clearing out some stuff, and we had just got a Christmas basket with a bunch of.
Including the food.
We just got a Christmas basket and a bunch of fruit, fruit basket, and I told, I told her, I said, Leah, I said, get in here, and she goes, what's, what's up? I said, we got a fruit basket to the city, I said, let's get some, I had to get scissors out, I said, let's get some of this before Jim gets here, and Jim walks into the room, he said, Jim's here.
Hey, 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 timeout, timeout there. I said, let's not break into the basket, because Jim will be mad. I know he's not here, but Jim will be mad when he gets back, and he comes up behind us and goes, Jim's here.
That's amazing.
So this guy, you know, he comes out of, you know, this guy comes out of walls sometimes, but it's been a, it's been a privilege working with Jim. I was gonna roast Don Fitting. Where's Don? Very is back here.
He's hiding.
I was gonna roast Don Fitting tonight, because this guy's the ultimate poker player, he's got the same face for everything, you know, and I, I was gonna go through all of his many emotions, but give you the same Don Fitting's face, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass on that, since I gave you a little taste. CDK, it's been a pleasure getting to know you again, you owe me lunch.
Yeah, you owe me coffee.
Chief Trexel's not here, but the inspector general is, so we've, we've got, we've got all the heavy hitters here tonight. It's just been a privilege and an honor to, to serve the citizens of Burlington. Thank you for believing enough in me, at least the second time, to, to reelect me, and it's been an honor, it has been an honor. Twan?
Well, that's, this is exactly why I didn't stay on and run for mayor, because nobody can follow all the great things that you say and do.
Yes, they can.
No, you're right, they can. And it'll be really exciting to see what the next full council will do with what, you know, you have helped mold. I just want to, you know, thank my family, I gotta thank my grandmother, Grandma Jo. She was the person who encouraged me to take out my papers to run for city council. And I did, and here I am, four years later. I feel like I've learned a lot, and.
Are you a council person we've had?
Yeah.
Have we had a council person younger than Annie before?
There was, I was the youngest female.
Youngest female?
Yeah, I'll hold on to that.
Own it.
Hopefully not the last youngest, so, and I always encourage other people to, like you said, you know, there's so much going on in the city, and not just city, but with the community, there's so much for people to get involved with, no matter what you're interested in, and it's important to be aware of that and everything that the city has to offer. With that, I just, I appreciate all the memories and all the advice and constructive criticism, and I look forward to seeing what all of you can do. Thank you.
Well said. I'm. Well said, MPT. Classmate?
It's been a pleasure to have served with both of you the last couple of years, learned a lot, I'll miss your comedy.
He's talking to you, Ian.
Yeah. So, I also do want to put a quick shout-out out there right now to the Burlington Police Department, Des Moines County Sheriff's Office, and the West Burlington Police Department. We had our annual Shop the Cop event this past weekend. We had twenty-five smiling third graders, smiles from ear to ear, they had a great time Saturday morning, and did the annual parade convoy from Blackhawk Elementary to Walmart with lights and sirens blaring. And it's become more of a spectacle, not just for the kids, but for all the people in the neighborhoods that we drive through, and the cars that are stopped along the roads. So I, I want to give a big shout-out to those three departments, and then also to all of the people who have supported that program. It's hard to believe, but this was, it's, we, we invited, or we had our one-hundred-and-fiftieth kit this year, so it's been a really cool event. So again, thank you to those departments and all the people that support that. And Merry Christmas to everybody in the crowd, everybody at home, and especially the six people sitting up here, seven people sitting up.
James?
No meeting next week. Merry Christmas to all of us. We will have a work session, though, the week between Christmas and New Years, we'll swearing in the two new council members, not swearing at them.
Well, let's go.
There will, there will-
It comes to the next week.
Yeah. There will be a couple of items of business that will be on that agenda as well, unfortunately, but that's it. Merry Christmas.
We good?
We're good.
Let's get a motion.
Second.
Oh, it's already been moved.
I made it second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Campbell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Hmm.
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.